Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, station. Dale Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Here.
Carl Doty?
Here.
Gary Elk?
Here.
All present, we have a quorum. Before we get any further on the agenda, is there any conflict of interest with any items on the agenda and action items that you gentlemen have? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar, which includes the approval of the 1227 2021 Agenda, approval of the 1213 2021 Meeting Minutes, approval of claims, and set hearing for January 10th, 2022 for 110 Quinn Drive, conditional use number C 2021-12 manufactured home Schmidt. Any discussion?
I do, may I have a question on the bills under the very first page, Claims Report? You have nine hundred and sixty-four dollars in supplies, but it doesn't say to who or what or anything.
Which one?
The very first one under the Claims Report, page three.
Page three?
That's what it says on top of this one.
And where's page one and two? That would have been the total of Hatch. Pages are incorrect.
So just for one, I'm sorry?
Hatch. For supplies for the, um, it's either water or wastewater, depending on... Those are all for water? Here is right here. Yeah, some... The pages got mixed up on the claim list.
Yeah, they don't, it doesn't have a description. It just invoices based on whatever their stock number is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Alderman Householder, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Elk, any further discussion? Roll call please. Dale Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Hi.
Carl Doty?
Yes.
Gary Elk?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Let's move on to public comment. Members of the public are invited to speak on any matter that is not on the agenda. We ask that you please limit your remarks to three minutes per speaker. Please come to the podium, state your name. Okay, seeing no public comments, so I'll go ahead and close public comment. Let's move right into action items. Action item 7A, approval of transfer of retail malt beverage, malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license, Hippie Rockstar, 124 Main Street. Station.
Um, this is just a transfer of the malt beverage license from this and that Bartique, um, to Hippie Rockstar. Um, everything has been, background check's been done, um, and...
Taxes are paid.
Taxes are paid, everything like that has been done.
Okay, and it looks like we have a secondary one that we'll read in under action item B.
Yep, the second one is a...
Okay, for the second.
Wine license.
Okay, gentlemen, any discussion? Any questions? Not all entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Alderman Gillespie, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Householder, any further discussion? Roll call please. Jason Gillespie?
Hi.
Carl Doty?
Yes.
Gary Elk?
Yes.
Dale Householder?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Action item 7B, approval of new retail wine and cider license, Hippie Rockstar, 124 Main Street.
Um, this is actually a new license. The other one was a transfer. This is a new license because it starts January, um, first, 2022, and goes to December 31st of 2022. Um, so everything, the background check's been done. Everything is good and recommended to be approved.
Okay, gentlemen, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve, Alderman Gillespie, second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Householder, any further discussion? Roll call please. Dale Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Hi.
Carl Doty?
Yes.
Gary Elk?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Action item 7C, approval of conditional use for home daycare, number C 2021-11, 321 Pine Avenue, Garretson. Ms. Shade?
Okay, this conditional use permit application is to allow for a daycare at 321 Pine Avenue, Suite B. This is the unit at the corner of Park and Pine, so it'd be this unit here, and this is the parking for that unit there. Uh, by the way, the property contains a duplex with each unit having two bedrooms and one or two bathrooms. The units each have approximately 1,200 square feet of living space. Uh, each unit has two parking spot, spaces undercover. Um, Suite B, the corner unit, has access to the off-street parking for Park Street. There's also a covered carport. Um, so there are two vehicles fit nicely here, and then there's plenty of driveway room for two additional vehicles. This one here is more one vehicle and then one exterior, and this space is shared with this property. Um, please note that this property or this partial line goes up and extends further into here.
So that's a wrap in that thing?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, per Hill City Municipal Code, um, oh, just to note, 329 Pine Avenue, which is the, the structure and property just to the south is a nightly vacation rental. Uh, per Hill City Municipal Code, a child daycare operation must obtain a conditional use permit in an R4 zone. Uh, I've got a diagram and map in the report in regards to which unit is which unit, so A and B, and the appropriate parking spaces for each. The corner unit would be the daycare operation. The adjacent carport can hold two vehicles easily with room in the driveway for two more vehicles. Proposed land use does not conflict with the intended goals of Hill City's comprehensive plan. The proposed conditional use permit does meet the majority of the standards as set forth in Title IX. Uh, there's no flood hazard area on the property. Uh, Hill City Municipal Code does not state what the parking requirements would be for a home daycare. A search of other city codes in a Google search resulted in numerous references to one vehicle space per 10 children. Um, it appears that the four off-street parking spaces for this corner unit would be sufficient for the intended use. Um, application states maximum hours of operation would be 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Maximum number of children would be 12, as per the state regulations. Applicant is intending to care for between seven and 10 children. Uh, three, the retaining wall that borders that yard on the, uh, it's more so on that B, does encroach into the public right-of-way anywhere from 12 feet to 18 feet. An agreement with the city dated, um, October 13th of 2020 indicates this encroachment is acceptable as long as it does not create any traffic or other concerns and can remain until such a time as the street is reconfigured. There's no current plans to widen the street or disrupt any portion of the right-of-way in this area. Uh, city does reserve the right to utilize all rights of way for placement of water and sewer lines and to conduct necessary maintenance. This does not have any effect on the proposed use. P&amp;Z Commission reviewed this conditional use permit application and recommended their approval with the following condition. If approved by city council, applicant to register with the state of South Dakota and abide by all South Dakota laws related to a registered family daycare. I've received no written opposition, but I think at this time we need to open it up for public comment.
That sounds good. Thank you, Ms. Shade. Uh, gentlemen, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to public comment, then bring it back to you for discussion. Any members of the public, if you'd like to address the council on this action item that we have, please come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Lamont Hughes, I have property that joins that, and, uh, I don't have any problem with the daycare. I think we need it. I just have a couple of questions. Uh, playground, where is that gonna be? Because the carport takes up one and there's a little area behind that. Uh, be a very small area for playground, and, uh, a liability issue right there, and I've got a fence that goes through there, so I kinda need to know what kind of playground equipment, if it's gonna be any.
There's gonna be any, okay. Um, Ms. Shade, um, are they required to have playground equipment per statute? Okay, do we have the requestor here with us tonight?
Um, yes.
Do you wanna go ahead and answer that question since you'd be the perfect one to do so?
So on the side yard and in the front, there's pretty good space up over here and over here, so we wouldn't be in this back part at all.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. The other, the other deal was maybe a noise issue, but for parking, if, I understand it's from six in the morning till six at night, and if they show up at 5:45, kinda letting out kids and vehicles and stuff, I gotta render in that house pretty close. So that might be an issue. I don't know, but...
Okay.
I mean, it's, I'm all for the daycare.
Okay.
I, I just had some questions that, and, you know, okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead then and close it for public comment, bring it back to the council. Gentlemen, who'd like to go first?
Danny, I have a question. On your, your recommendations, you said that applicant would register and stay in South Dakota and abide by the laws and register family daycare. Do we have any follow-up if that, whether that occurs or not?
Um, because it is a conditional use, there will be a one-year follow-up. So yes, we do have that in place for conditional uses. And that's, um, pretty easy for me to research on the state's website, and they usually will do an initial inspection, um, and that will be posted.
Anything else, Mr. Householder?
Yeah, I do with the applicant. I guess I'm a little concerned where you're pointing to the playground area. How are you gonna control the kids from running in? You have two streets and an intersection. I, I would be concerned without a fence. Do you have a plan to put a fence up?
I'm working on a fence, yes.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Alderman Elk, anything? Alderman Doty?
Uh, what was the answer about the fence? I did not hear that.
She's working on one.
Okay, perfect, yep, and that was kinda my same concern too, especially with the, the kids from the school kinda flying up and down that street like a, like a raceway, so... Uh, that's all I had, so I'm good.
Okay, Alderman Gillespie?
None.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Alderman Householder, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Elk, any further discussion? Okay, roll call please. Gary Elk?
Yes.
Dale Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Hi.
Carl Doty?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, motion carries. If you run into issues, I'd suggest that you let Ms. Shade know. Okay. Uh, action item 7D, approval of zoning change request, R3 to C3. Number Z 2021-0223927, Highway Set 385, ZRS LLC. Ms. Shade?
Okay, this zoning change request is for a 6.32 acre parcel running on US Highway 385 16. The applicants are wanting to change the current zoning of R3 to a C3 zoning in order to develop the property. The plan is to construct up to 12 rental cabins and related common areas such as a shelter picnic area, perhaps a gazebo, but the, the intent is to serve the tourism industry. The existing property is served by a private well and wastewater system, contains a residential structure and a carport. The property was previously rezoned in 2016 from its base zoning of Ag 3 to an R3 designation. At that time, the previous owner did not have any solid plan for the zoning change request other than residing on the property. Property characteristics are, the first one-fifth of the property from street frontage is open, gently sloping upward. The property elevation at the front southeast corner is 4,920 feet, and the northwest corner is 5,120 feet in elevation. The applicants plan to build a gravel road from the existing house, wind up the hillside, providing access to the rental cabins. Okay, as you can see from the second page in my report, um, the orange highlighted parcels, uh, let's see, this one, this one, is that one, one in here, and this one, and this one are also owned by the applicant who is requesting the rezoning. Uh, the surrounding zoning is, the lot to the east is Zone C1. This is McGass, uh, is the owner, and the plans were, uh, were made to build a retail store. Uh, two, the lot to the west is Zone Ag 3. The lot to the north is Zone R3, and lots to the south are Zone Low Density Residential and Planned Unit Development. Um, two of, and the PUD are the two lots on the west end, the west side. It's gonna be these ones in here, and these are all Pennant County. The proposed land use does not conflict with the intent or goals of Hill City's comprehensive plan. Page 18 of the Comp Plan states, it can be expected that commercial land uses will continue to exist and be further developed along the highway corridors and for the residential uses to be located beyond in the outlying areas of Hill City. The proposed zoning change request does meet the standards as set forth in Title IX. Certified letters to surrounding property owners within 150 feet of the subject property notifying of the zoning change request hearing were sent out in December 14th. The property was physically signed notifying of zoning change requests on that same date. And across the street prop, those residential properties, they were notified. They were included in that list. Um, there's no flood hazard area on this property. P&amp;Z Commission has reviewed the zoning change request application and recommends their approval to city council with the following conditions. One, zoning will return to an R3 designation unless substantial work has been completed on the development plan of rental cabins within 18 months of city council approval of the rezoning to C3. Two, verify the access easement proposed usage is acceptable to the neighbor at 23923 US Highway 385. That's this shared access goes into, to the McGass property here. This is a shared access easement with this parcel. We just, the Planning and Zoning Commission just wanted to make sure that the increase in traffic on that driveway was gonna be something that wasn't gonna cause a problem between the two neighbors. And three, an approved state of South Dakota commercial wastewater system will be required for the proposed development. Copies of the state-approved plans must be provided to the city of Hill City.
Okay, thank you.
I've received no letters, no phone calls and opposition to this request, although we should open it up for public comment at this time.
Okay.
And the owner of the property, representative of the property is here.
Okay, so gentlemen, before I open it up for your discussion, I'll invite the public to come. If there's anybody that would like to speak to the council regarding this request, please come to the podium and state your name. Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Uh, will the representative for this action please come to the podium? Council may have questions. Thank you. All right, council, I'll go ahead and open it up for discussion. How about Mr. Elk? Would you like to go first?
From the past, I understand that there's only one well for these two houses. Yes. And there's, there's been a problem. If you're using water in one house, it's hard to get water to the other house. Is there gonna be another well to supply all the 12 cabins also? Yeah, I, we would intend on putting another well. We, I was also told, and I haven't, uh, verified it, or spoken to them myself, but, uh, when we bought this property from Joe Klein, he said that they were gonna put in their own well because of this issue. But I don't know where that's at. Okay.
Okay, anything else? Alderman Householder?
Will the cabins have bathrooms in them?
Oh, yeah. I actually brought the plans if you wanted to see them.
And the cabins will all be in that lower unit, not the triangle above? Is that correct?
Well, I was, uh, that's one question I had. I was thinking that we were going to change the classification for both because it's like 10.23 acres, but I see it looks like only this one was on the docket. But the reality is, is this is not developable anyway because of the grade. You, you know, it's very, uh, treacherous or steep, you, you know. Uh, so, you know, once you start getting, you know, past the, how they, I don't know why they had this in two parcels, but once you get past this, this piece and go over into that, you know, four point whatever acres, it gets very, very steep, so... You, then basically the out, outline would be to either come here with the roll or here, whatever, that's, you know, whatever elevation, you know, is more friendly, and then we're gonna basically have kind of a pass here and maybe put like three, 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 you know, we might not even be able to fit 12, but I said as many as 12.
Danny, are there any side setbacks for a development like this on the cabins?
Oh, yeah, he would have to follow the, um, commercial three, um, setbacks. I'm, I'm gonna run from memory, so please excuse me. I think it's a 10-foot frontage, five feet on the sides and 30 feet on the rear.
That doesn't seem to be a problem with your plans.
No, no.
Okay, Alderman Gillespie?
I don't think I have anything.
Alderman Doty?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, if there are no further discussions to be had with council, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve. Alderman Elk, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Gillespie, any further discussion? Roll call please. Dale Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Hi.
Carl Doty?
Yes.
Gary Elk?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, action item 7E, approval of final plat, P2021-03 Epis and Frank, 285/293 Main Street, Almanza. Ms. Shade?
Okay, this is the final plat is to erase the interior lot line, uh, property line between 285 and 293 Main Street. The lot consolidation is due to the fact the owners building one structure across these two lots. Um, lot 17R and lot 18R to be combined and replatted to lot 17R2. The combined lot will total about a fifth of the acre. Access to the lots are off of Main Street from a pedestrian standpoint and the rear alley. Central business district requires no off-street parking areas, and the only setback requirement is the 30-foot rear setback for deliveries, uh, employee parking, et cetera. Preliminary plat was reviewed at the November 1st, 2021 P&amp;Z meeting. All members were in favor of approval. Final plat was reviewed at the December 20th P&amp;Z meeting, and again, all commissioners voted for approval. Proposed land use does not conflict with the intended goals of Hill City's Comp Plan. The proposed final plat to erase an internal lot line does meet the standards as set forth in Title IX. There is no flood hazard area on this property. Um, P&amp;Z Commission reviewed the final plat and recommends their approval to city council.
Okay, gentlemen, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this action item? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. Gentlemen, I'll bring it back here. Let's start with Alderman Gillespie. Any discussion?
None at all.
Alderman Doty?
None.
Alderman Householder?
Danny, the south lot line of this lot will be how far from our right-of-way of McGregor?
The what?
The, the south lot line of this lot is how far from our right-of-way on McGregor?
It, it should have buttoned right up to the, to the right-of-way in McGregor.
So then the sidewalk, he still is planning a sidewalk there then?
He is planning a sidewalk entryway to that south side McGregor door, yes.
Okay, Alderman Elk?
Nothing.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Alderman Gillespie, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Householder, any further discussion? Roll call please. Jason Gillespie?
Hi.
Carl Doty?
Yes.
Gary Elk?
Yes.
Dale Householder?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Moving on to action item 7 Epis and Frank. Approve, approval of Resolution 2021-11, approving plat, lot 17R2 of block original town of Hill City. Danny?
That's the plat that was just approved. I'm not sure why there was a secondary line on that, but it is the resolution that said you guys approved it, so...
Okay.
Motion to approve the resolution and authorize signature?
Motion.
How do we do this one?
Yep.
Yep, motion to approve. Alderman Gillespie? Second, Householder, any discussion? Roll call please. Jason Gillespie?
Hi.
Carl Doty?
Yes.
Gary Elk?
Yes.
Dale Householder?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Action item 7G, Resolution 2021-10, approval of contingency transfer. Ms. Talon?
Um, this is the contingency transfer. Um, we have $75,255.93 in our contingency. We need to transfer $11,300, um, and that's due to our work comp insurance, um, some salary, um, and wages due to a third, a December, three pay periods in December, and then the water and sewer for, um, fire department was higher than what nor, normally was.
Any questions, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Householder, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Gillespie, any further discussion? Roll call please. Carl Doty?
Yes.
Gary Elk?
Yes.
Dale Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Hi.
Act, all in favor, motion carries. Action item 7H, ordinance 2021-05, amending Title I Administration Chapters 1.04 City Appointed Officers and 1.05 Duties and Compensation of Appointed Officers, and 1.06 City Boards and Employees First Reading.
Okay, um, this is just a cleanup of all of the appointed officers and employee, um, positions here at the city. We had asked, um, for the finance officer to be changed from an appointed position to a, um, hired position. Um, so that language has changed in here. Um, everything that's highlighted in there is something that I had cha, that we had changed and, um, put in as, um, new wording. As you can see, the appointed, the appointed by the mayor, um, we changed that, um, to state specifically as a two-year term made in the month of the mayoral election. Um, instead of, um, appointing them every year that you had done before previously, it's gonna be on the terms of with the mayor.
So those said appointed positions, uh, after passing of this ordinance would be the city administrator, the city attorney, and the city engineer?
Yes. And chief of police if you ever decide to take, and police officers back again.
Each one of those would need to be done every two years at a minimum?
Yes.
Cause currently there are some that don't require reappointment every year or anything.
Correct, and the...
That had been changed if you were talking about, um...
City administrator.
City administrator position. In here, that, um, language has been cleaned up
Yep.
and changed completely, um, to state that that position isn't appointed and it's pointed on the mayor's, every two years.
Mayoral election cycle. Yeah, that was one of the things. Uh, there was some wording that was conflicting in the different sections. And the biggest change, um, as to the ordinance itself, is making the finance officer, um, an employed physician and not an appointed physician.
Yes, and that's under the, um, what's that, chapter?
So in a sense, the city administrator goes from being an employee, he had appointed at one time, and goes from being that to an appointed position every two years, and the finance officer goes from being an appointed position to an employee.
Physician, right, right.
Well, the city administrative position has always been an appointed position, but it was for, I mean, it was a definite term, which the conflict was that language was special and unique in its own paragraph, but the rest of, the rest of the code referred to annually. Um, and so it, it makes sense to make the change to the mayoral election. Um, the mayor is elected for a two-year term. It's their choice to figure out who they wanna put in those positions. It's still subject to council approval. Um, if the mayor so chooses that that person that's been appointed isn't working out, the mayor has the authority on their own to remove that appointed person. Um, and then if there's a different mayor in two years, the new mayor gets to ch, choose, so...
Any other, any questions? Any other questions? Go ahead.
The 1.0401 and 1.0406... The one point oh four oh one and one point oh four oh six, for commonality, it says in the oh one, approval of the common council, on this one, majority members of the city council. I would like to see majority in both of them. A majority vote of the common council, not just approval. We assume approval means the majority, but.
So-
Or do you strike the majority from the-
So-
Or strike the majority?
Yeah, so staff, we had a conversation about the word majority, and we purposely took it out. Um, and we must have left it in one spot. So, it, it leads to questions of saying, look, you've got two ward members, you know, two, two members from each ward. Um, if two vote for somebody and two vote against, you don't have a majority. And then that, that gets into the whole question about breaking a tie and the mayor's authority, which, you know, we, we explored those waters a couple of years ago. And so we left it more generically, um, and took out the word majority. The, the other question that lingers is, you know, let's say Carl is out of town and he can't be on the phone, but you've still got a quorum here, um, then it would be a two to one would be a majority. But is it a majority of those present at the meeting, or is it a majority of all members that are currently have,
The majority to go.
That's the seats are being held by somebody. The other question is, by definition, the mayor is part of the council, common council, but doesn't get to vote unless there's a tie. So there's some other things out there that are at the state level that we can't address. We can't fix those things. Majority, if you're gonna put that word in there, you need a little bit more clarification of what you mean. Because you, you could have an empty seat, uh, and then a, a two to one vote is fine, but what if, what if, you know, you, you only have three members and two is a, is a quorum, but then it's a one-to-one tie. You get what I'm saying? There, there's just more questions.
Well, let's just strike majority on the one point oh four, point oh six.
Yeah, and if you see, that one isn't highlighted, so they didn't change that. We just need to strike the word majority.
Such a punishment made by the mayor shall be subject to, to the approval of the city council or common council, whichever you prefer.
Common councils, we'll change it to that.
Okay, yeah, cause then it makes it consistent with the rest of it.
Yeah, same language as the no one, that would suffice there, I believe.
Okay, let's strike that.
Okay, anything else?
Yep, um, on one point oh six oh nine, um, it's talking about a mayoral, mayor, mayoral committee, and I'd like to know what constitutes that by definition. Cause it's referenced in two places, I think, that term.
This was, this was part of a prior conversation.
Yeah, well, it was with Katie too.
Yeah.
Cause she said-
But it was with council as well, from what I remember. There was a discussion with council about that whole question as well.
Okay, and, uh-
And I, I'm trying to remember.
Can't remember.
I know we had the conversation. I can't remember what the path it took though.
The committee is appointed by the mayor.
Right.
As it's, and then still subject to approval by the common council.
So it could be the mayor, a council member, Brett, if it's for my position, or it could be me if it was for the public works position. It's whoever she nominates to be part of her committee. Or the mayor de- nominates to be part of a committee.
So is it two, is it three, is it what?
It could be, it could be, it could be whatever.
Yeah.
So open-ended. Could be a member of the public, could be three members, could be five, could be-
But perhaps the word hired by a mayoral committee, should that be? It's not necessarily hired, cause you're not providing a fee. Yeah.
I mean, could just be a recommended.
Recommended, yeah, recommended by a mayoral committee.
And then in the next one, the one point oh six one ten, the very last sentence, finance officers should be bonded in the same amount as required for a treasurer. Who's our, our chief treasurer?
That's state law.
State law?
That, that states that we have to be bonded as the treasurer is the state treasurer.
State treasurer.
So that's a-
Required for the state treasurer, yeah. Yep, anything else?
So you want recommended, put in there instead of hired?
Yeah, recommended is a bad word, or hired is a bad word.
Yeah, that committee wouldn't have hiring authority anyway.
Exactly, exactly. Exactly, okay. All right, anybody else? All right, with no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the changes, recommended changes.
Motion to approve, Alderman Householder, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Alderman Doty. I know, it was a delay, right? Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Dale Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
Carl Doty?
Yes.
Gary Alk?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carried. Action item seven I. Ordinance two zero two one dash zero six Marijuana Ordinance First Reading. Mr. McMackin?
Thank you, Mayor. So this item was previously on the agenda as just a discussion item, and, and we covered over the past few months, actually, quite a bit of ground. Um, the ordinance that you have in front of you does not, uh, spell out exactly how many dispensaries or cultivators or manufacturers or lab testing licenses you're going to authorize, nor does it tell, um, how much those licenses are gonna cost. Those are all gonna be contained within a separate resolution, and I have not provided to that for you tonight. Uh, that's not the main, uh, topic here. The, the topic is just to have the first reading uh, and, and some discussion on essentially the skeletal structure of the marijuana ordinance. For the second reading, my plan is to bring those resolutions with, um, again, a kind of a, uh, consensus that we had at our last meeting about what we were thinking for licenses and fees, and, and, and we can debate that individually. So that will be coming, uh, but again, this document you're looking at tonight is not dependent. Uh, it's, it's a part of that other one, but not really dependent on it as far as being adoption, uh, adopted. In, in this, uh, previously, you got a draft copy like this, and then the copy that's in your packet looks a little bit different. Most of it's the same. We added all of the, kind of the first page, whereas is, um, and, and I need to clarify, and it's not under front page, but the intent of this ordinance is to replace that stopgap temporary marijuana ordinance that you adopted back in, in, um, June for, um, or, or early July for it to take place. So this would replace that in its entirety.
Quick question, Brett, the second, is it gonna be a separate ordinance that comes along or an addendum to this?
So-
With the fees and-
Resolution.
Types.
Yeah, so, yeah, so let me, let me clarify. So you have the skeletal structure of the ordinance in your hands tonight, and I'm asking for you to review it and take action on the first reading of it. Since it's an ordinance, it needs to be read twice, uh, and adopted twice. So when I come back for the second reading, whenever that is, um, I will have a separate resolution that you will have to act on after you act on the, the ordinance piece of it, that will work in conjunction with this marijuana ordinance, that will fill in the gaps of the number of licenses, how much those licenses are,
Go ahead.
Application fees, uh, transfer fees,
All of that.
All of the fees that we've discussed previously. Uh, and again, I'm gonna put in the numbers that I heard you guys throw around as being in your comfort zone, but you'll have the ability to debate what those are, um, and, and when those go into effect. So even if you adopt the ordinance, you can still kind of put it on hold pending the results of the, the costs of the licenses.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't going through an ordinance and then that wasn't a complete ordinance. So since it's a resolution, I understand that it's-
Yeah, it's complete in the sense that if you read through the ordinance, it says the, that those number of licenses and the types of licenses and the fees shall be, uh, uh, adopted and approved by the city council through, via resolution, a separate document. I don't, I don't like to put, uh, many numbers in the ordinances, just because we know that, that things change and evolve and whatnot, and changing, getting in there just to change a silly number doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So, again, that will be coming later. And so, getting back to the, this, this core marijuana ordinance, really, everything stayed the same, um, since the last time you saw it, the only, except for, I did kind of beef up the language a little bit for the, um, suspension and revocation, uh, of a license and the enforcement, um, and penalties. And I, what I did was I looked at, um, a few more of the different jurisdictions locally, Pennington County, Custer, Custer County, um, just to get an idea of what they do. And so I put in a few dates, I put in a few, you know, requirements for us of saying, look, we need to send you a letter of the violation, you've got a certain number of days to appeal it, uh, kind of more of the process. What I did find in the other ordinances and a lot of the other ones, there, there were some in other municipalities that were okay and decent, but a majority of them just said, hey, if you're in violation of something, um, they were essentially saying, well, staff can just yank the license. It was at the staff level. And so they were very nebulous about kind of what path it needed to take and, and your ability to appeal and how many days you had to appeal. So I think actually ours, by adding that information, I'm fine with it, but we're actually probably ninety percent uh, ahead of the game of, of the, some of these rest of these communities by actually kind of mapping it out, what that structure looks like. In, in my vision of this, um, there's obviously staff is the boots on the ground, working with these license holders, however, there may be, there might be one, there might be four, who knows? But working with these companies on a daily basis, these license holders. And if we don't get compliance, and we always try to get compliance, it's not about issuing citations. It's, it, you know, you can do that, but we've seen in the past where somebody's been issued a fifty-dollar fine, a hundred-dollar fine, and the problem still exists, and it continues to exist, and it continues to exist. I just need a path that if staff feels it's reasonable to bring that forward and has concerns, that we can bring it, just like we do to a court, where we present something before a judge and say, have you met, uh, the litmus test of, of suspending or revoking this license? Um, is there enough evidence, um, to, to warrant, um, whatever the punishment is? And then that's up for, the way I've drafted it, is that, um, in, in certain elements, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission is the one to, um, run that question and to answer that question. And the reason I did that is that I want the city council, cause we know that's gonna get appealed. We know that that company, if, if, if there's a revocation, uh, they're gonna appeal it. Well, there's only one more body they can appeal it to, and that's the common council. You guys are the governing body for everything that happens within the city. So that's why it didn't make sense to bring the revocation directly to you, because there is no official appeal process yet. My gut tells me that between staff's opinion and planning and zoning's opinion, we should be able, between the five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten of us, come up with a reasonable, um, solution or, or answer to that question if they should be revoked or suspended or whatnot. And if we by chance make a bad decision, they still have an opportunity to appeal it before going to court somewhere. So, uh, I think it's a reasonable solution. I know it puts stress in people's hands, but I think that's what we need to do, so. Other than that, the rest of the ordinance is the same as what you've seen previously.
This has been reviewed by our council.
Um, yeah, she's, I sent her a copy of it. Um, she has not given me notes as of yet. She kind of flipped through it and said, I'm sure it reads just fine. Uh, if there are changes that she wants to make, we have a second reading that we can include those in, and I will, that's on my little to clarify, I'll to make sure that we incorporate any changes from her into the final version. But I don't see anything substantially changing, so.
Okay, gentlemen, any discussion, any questions, conversation?
Looks pretty comprehensive to me.
Okay, if you gentlemen are comfortable then, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Alderman Householder, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Gillespie, any further discussion? Roll call, please. Carl Doty?
Yeah.
Gary Alk?
Yes.
Dale Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Moving on to action item seven J, approval of the bid for Phase Two Alley Paving Parking Improvements. Bid project number one, Mr. McMackin.
Thank you, Mayor. So at this time, I would request that this item be tabled until the next council meeting. Uh, the reason is, is that, um, we only had one bidder. Uh, we put this out to bid in November. We opened the bids the first, I think it was December first of this month. Uh, the only bidder was Simon, uh, Construction or, or Contractors. They were the only one to submit the bid. At that time, um, there was some discussion with our city engineer and with council about, the bid came in fairly high, it was at four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, I believe. There were some project elements that we could remove, uh, to save some money in there. And so we've, uh, presented those changes to Simon. Some of them have been approved and kind of signed off by Simon that they're okay with them. There's some other changes that were made that they haven't had a chance to review yet, and the person that does that is still on Christmas vacation. So I know, uh, and they'll be back, um, later this week, I know that we're pushing up against a thirty-day, um, limit for acceptance of that bid, but, um, Simon's is fine with, um, going beyond that thirty days, cause really, the cards are in their hands. They have, the way it's written is they have the ability to withdraw their bid after thirty days. So we've got, uh, a verbal, uh, with them that when he gets back, he'll go through the rest of it, and we'll come up with those official numbers. And then once I have those, I will print out a new sheet, uh, of line items that you've got, seen before, we'll go through, and it'll have the two, total. Um, I'm, I'm thinking that, that number that we'll save will probably drop that number down to probably just under four hundred thousand, so about three hundred and ninety-five thousand. So it'll be, you know, maybe ninety to a hundred and five thousand dollars off, uh, in project costs. So for now, I just, uh, would ask that you table this item to the next meeting, and then we can make a decision, um, at that time.
Let me ask a question real quick before I invite the council. So you said that we're running up against that thirty days. What, what date is the actual thirty day?
Uh, it's the, uh,
January?
It's the thirtieth.
So it's December thirtieth? Do we have written communication, um, from Simon that-
We've got a, uh, we've got a verbal and an e- an email.
Okay.
We don't have a, um-
Email's fine.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a, a written agreement of any sorts like that, but I do have it in an email.
Okay.
That he's, that he's out of town and he's more than happy to extend, um, that thirty-day window.
Gentlemen?
Motion to table.
Motion to table?
Second.
Motion Gillespie, second Auq, any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Gary Alk?
Yes.
Dale Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
You bet.
Carl Doty?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor, motion carries, and our last action item, seven K, it's been a record breaker tonight. Ordinance two zero two one dash zero seven Supplemental Appropriations.
This is a supplemental ord- um, appropriation ordinance. Um, we, in our gross receipts fund, um, did not, um, budget the correct amount, and we've over budgeted in some, in a line item of subsidies regarding, um, advertising and promoting the city. Brett, you wanna, we're gonna try this out, and the computer is going to read the ordinance for us.
City of Hill City, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero seven, supplemental appropriations ordinance. Be it ordained by the city of Hill City that the following sum is supplementally appropriated to meet the obligations of the municipality. This is to supplement the budget for the purpose of promoting the city of Hill City. This is to supplement the budget for the purpose of promoting the city of Hill City. Whereas, at the time of preparing the budget for the city of Hill City for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, it was not known the extra expense would be incurred. Therefore, an insufficient amount was appropriated. Whereas, the common council of the city of Hill City is authorized by S D C L nine dash twenty-one dash seven to adopt such amounts as said governing body may determine necessary. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city of Hill City, the following supplemental appropriations shall be made. Gross receipt fund. Four six five three, promoting the city. Four five six zero, subsidies two thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents. Funding source. Unassigned fund balance two thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents. Total appropriations two thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents. Be it further resolved that this ordinance is necessary for the support of the city of Hill City municipal government and its public responsibilities. And therefore, this ordinance shall take effect upon the passage and publication thereof. Dated this twenty-seventh day of December, twenty twenty-one.
And the reason for this is due to advertising for the first and fourth quarter of the twenty twenty. Those bills didn't come in till twen, the first part of twenty twenty-one. As of now, we've already received them for twenty twenty-one, this period, this pay period, and it's actually in your claims this time to pay for them. So we should be fine with how much we budgeted for the twenty twenty-two budget. So, just happens to when the invoices fall that we sometimes are off on that, of a budget.
Thank you, Stacey. Gentlemen, any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve Alderman Householder, is there a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Alk, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Dell Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
Carl Doty?
Yes.
Gary Alk?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Uh, we have no discussion items. Let's move on into report items. Let's start out with Alderman Doty.
I got nothing.
Alderman Gillespie?
Nothing.
Alderman Householder?
Went to last planning zoning, new officers, officers were elected, Ron Walker is the chairman, Raleigh Gnome is the vice chairman. And I lost it.
Tre, treasurer or secretary?
Secretary. Who, but, um, I don't know. Gosh, don't you guys know?
That's all right.
I didn't write it down, anyway.
That's okay.
Oh, yeah, Angie.
Angie, okay.
Angie, there we go. Uh, let's see, conditional use permit, we're gonna talk about that next time. Lot consolidation we did tonight. Bob Lowery gave a very detailed explanation of the, um, E D C and what they do and what they have done. I think the commissioners were very impressed by his report.
Okay, Alderman Alk?
Nothing.
Okay, um, I'll be very quick. I don't have anything other to report than I'd like to thank. First of all, the city of Hill City, um, the Christmas spirit this year was unbelievable. Uh, the lane of lights were gorgeous. Thank you to city staff, um, for all the work that you did this past year. We're gonna be moving into a new year, so. It can be nothing but exciting without everything that we've got going on. Um, and I'd like to shout out a special thanks to Alderman Doty for taking over the lane of lights and kind of trying to build it into a very big, um. Thing for our residents as well as the rest of the community. With that being said, I'll go ahead and turn it over to city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just three kind of quick things. I've drafted, um, the, uh, proposed nightly rental ordinance, and I've gotta make a few adjustments. That's already been reviewed, um, by the planning and zoning commission one time. I'm gonna make those changes that they had requested and put that in there. It's gonna be on their agenda for, um, consideration and recommendation at their next meeting, okay? So that's coming up. Once they make that recommendation, it will work its way into your packets for this group. And so be at the lookout for that. Second item is, over the years, we've, we've received, uh, uh, depending on the day and the year and, and kind of the conditions outside. We've had different, um, complaints and concerns about, um, the smell down at the wastewater treatment plant. And so, um, Mr. Mitch Brown, who's, I believe is in the audience, um, has, is a property odor just to the, kind of the north of the plant. And he's been, um, doing some research of potential solutions to help kind of minimize that, that impact, um, that smell impact. One of the, one of the causes of it is our, uh, emergency pond that every once in a while we need to utilize. It's not an annual event that we need to use it. It's depending on weather conditions and ground saturation. As you know, if the ground is saturated, we get infiltration groundwater into our wastewater sewer lines. Once that water, that groundwater gets into those lines and hits our plant, we've gotta treat it like it was sewage coming from a hole. And so we process a lot more, um, material because of that. Depending on the time of the year, we might need to, um, we might, the, the, the flow might exceed what our capacity is to bring it into the plant. So we have to shift it over into our emergency pond to kind of choke down the throttle on it, so to speak, as we can't accept it all. And then when we have capacity, we can open that up and redirect it back into the plant. Well, that's one of the locations that potentially smells down at the wastewater plant is that emergency pond. I know Jim Evans, our wastewater treatment operator, has used, um, um, some hydrogen peroxide, uh, pretty strong, not what you buy at the grocery store, the, the pharmacy. But some other more industrial strength that seems to have helped with smells coming out of that. But that's a big open kind of a pond. There's not a whole lot you can do to it and we have a need for it. The other smells kind of come from our pre-treatment room. Where all of the, all of the effluent comes into the, to the building and it goes through kind of the first screening stage of our process. That room in the pre-treatment room, if you've ever been down there, is fairly odiferous. And, uh, it's got, uh, all of the, the wiring and whatnot is blast proof stuff because you don't wanna create a spark in there. But, um, it vents on a, on a fairly regular cycle just to keep that environment safe, so you can go in there and breathe normally and, and not have any issues. Well, that discharge, that venting of that creates some odors that travel through the, the, kind of that valley. And depending on what the weather conditions are, you might get those cold layers of air that will trap, um, smells and whatnot in. So one option that Mr. Brown found, and we were discussing this this morning, was this, um. It's a, it's called an advanced odor control, a dry air scrubber. And it's, uh, approximately a seven by ten kind of a tank. And I just, a picture, I'll pass this around. And there's some kind of mi, material inside. I'm assuming there's probably some sand and charcoal and, and whatnot in there. Proprietary stuff that, um, you essentially vent your, um, room to that, um, tank. And then it goes through and, and takes care of ninety-nine percent of the smell. So I'll pass this around. We don't have many in the budget this year, and our budget for next year is already kind of put together. And so this would be an additional cost for just this system. The price quote that he obtained was like eighty-three thousand dollars for this. So I think it's something that, um, you know, we do receive a fair amount of calls about. It seems to be the, the predominant problems that we have seem to be in July and August when we have kind of max capacity. And if it's been a wet year, so something for us to consider, I think. The last thing I have is real quick is, um. I just got confirmation from Rich Locker with the D O T that our signalized intersection over by the little white church is officially going to get replaced this cal, this coming calendar year. And at, at their expense, not ours. If you remember, we had put in about forty thousand dollars-ish, um, to offset the cost of that, cause we weren't sure if that was gonna get on our, um. On our expense or theirs, and they said, no, we'll take care of it. Some time had marched on and I hadn't heard anything, so we checked again with them and they said, oh, we're going through the process right now. And it got approved, so it looks like it's gonna happen. I'm not sure how old that equipment is, but it is, mm, pretty, pretty old. I mean, it's still working, but, um. It's amazing it's lasted this long with kind of all the wiring that's falling apart in it, so, anyway, new lights.
Okay.
And that's it.
All right, well, with no further business, meeting adjourned. Happy New Year, everyone. Please be safe. It's amateur night.